Information to an employer, for example, without your permission. And if you'd like to know who is senior health information, you have the right to get a report. That's called an accounting of disclosures. HIPAA gives you the right to say how you want to be contacted. For example, you can tell your provider what phone number they should call to contact you, and whether they can leave a message. HIPAA also gives you the right to request that your information not be shared with certain people or organizations. All these rights are spelled out in the Notice of Privacy Practices, which is usually given to you or posted at your doctor's office or hospital. Be sure to read this notice carefully. It lets you know exactly how your information will be used and shared, and how your rights are being protected. And lastly, if you think any of these rights have been violated, you have the right to file a complaint. We're serious about working with you to protect your health information. Know your rights. To get started, just visit the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Office for Civil Rights at hhs.gov/OCR. Your health information, your rights. Whether your health information is stored on paper or electronically, you have the right to keep it private. Those rights are protected under a law known as HIPAA, the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act. HIPAA gives you important rights. First off, you have the right to see or get a copy of your medical records. Sometimes you might not be able to see certain parts of the full record, but you always have the right to ask. If you find a mistake in your record, you have the right to request to have it corrected. If you disagree with your doctor or health plan about certain information in your record, you have a right to submit a written statement of disagreement that will be kept with your record. You also have the right to know how your health information is used and shared. Now, your provider is allowed to share your information for certain reasons without asking you first. Like when your doctors work together to determine how to best treat you when you're sick, or to report the flu when it's in your area. But in general, your providers can't give information to an employer, for example, without your permission. And if you'd like to know who is senior health information, you have the right to get a report. That's called an accounting of disclosures. HIPAA gives you the right to say how you want to be contacted. For example, you can tell your provider what phone number they should call to contact you, and whether they can leave a message. HIPAA also gives you the right to request that your information not be shared with certain people or organizations. All these rights are spelled out in the Notice of Privacy Practices, which is usually given to you or posted at your doctor's office or hospital. Be sure to read this notice carefully. It lets you know exactly how your information will be used and shared, and how your rights are being protected. And lastly, if you think any of these rights have been violated, you have the right to file a complaint. We're serious about working with you to protect your health information. Know your rights. To get started, just visit the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Office for Civil Rights at hhs.gov/OCR. Your health information, your rights. Whether your health information is stored on paper or electronically, you have the right to keep it private. Those rights are protected under a law known as HIPAA, the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act. HIPAA gives you important rights. First off, you have the right to see or get a copy of your medical records. Sometimes you might not be able to see certain parts of the full record, but you always have the right to ask. If you find a mistake in your record, you have the right to request to have it corrected. If you disagree with your doctor or health plan about certain information in your record, you have a right to submit a written statement of disagreement that will be kept with your record. You also have the right to know how your health information is used and shared. Now, your provider is allowed to share your information for certain reasons without asking you first. Like when your doctors work together to determine how to best treat you when you're sick, or to report the flu when it's in your area. But in general, your providers can't give information to an employer, for example, without your permission. And if you'd like to know who is senior health information, you have the right to get a report. That's called an accounting of disclosures. HIPAA gives you the right to say how you want to be contacted. For example, you can tell your provider what phone number they should call to contact you, and whether they can leave a message. HIPAA also gives you the right to request that your information not be shared with certain people or organizations. All these rights are spelled out in the Notice of Privacy Practices, which is usually given to you or posted at your doctor's office or hospital. Be sure to read this notice carefully. It lets you know exactly how your information will be used and shared, and how your rights are being protected. And lastly, if you think any of these rights have been violated, you have the right to file a complaint. We're serious about working with you to protect your health information. Know your rights.
I, you know, I never know which one to watch. Okay. The time is six o'clock, and we are beginning our briefing session. Working briefing session, if you will. And just for a note, Mr. Harvey has notified us he is on the way, and he will be here as soon as he can. One note of housekeeping for everyone, please. There are two things on the agenda tonight. There is a special proclamation, and there is also a recognition by me of champions of the city. And those particular individuals that are coming for those two things are coming specially for that. So they're arranging their time, and they're scheduled to be here somewhere around seven, I told them. So as we get into our agenda, and if we see that executive session needs to be placed at the end of our meeting tonight, we will do that in deference to our guests that are coming for the seven o'clock time. So if you keep in mind of that, we'll keep it on time. And also ask Mr. Hager, as we proceed toward that executive session, whether we do it in orders we have it, or if we need to change the order to put it toward the end of our particular meeting. So thank you very much for your consideration with that. Okay, our work session and briefing time. We go first, item number one, to interim city manager, Mr. Brown. Consent agenda, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. The first item is consent agenda item A. Consider approval of draft city council meeting minutes for the special call, city council meeting on May, excuse me, on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
No questions, comments?
Questions about that? Okay. All right. Consent agenda item B. Consider an ordinance amending chapter nineteen, traffic article one in general, section nineteen dash one. Definitions by adding a definition of oversized vehicles by amending chapter nineteen, traffic article six. Stopping, standing, and parking by amending section nineteen dash one one five. Standing or parking of trucks, tractors, trailers, and commercial vehicles by amending section nineteen dash one one six. No parking and/or placement of oversized vehicles, storage unit, cargo containers, recreational vehicles on city streets by adding sections B and C. And then add the current subsection B to subsections D. And Chief Levigetti is here, and he'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. This is an item that has been presented to the council previously.
And in our packet, the changes were highlighted, and anything that needed to be blocked out was scripted as such. In terms of a knockout, anything else added was in yellow. Any other questions, comments? There were significant changes to it, but as I recall, all those changes have been incorporated now for something that we had discussed as council previously. So any questions, comments, chief, in terms of this? If not, we will proceed further. All right. Thank you, chief, and staff, all of the staff in law enforcement and ordinance is working on this one. Thank you for all your input on that one. I know that it took some time to focus on together, and in reading it, enforcement is up to y'all.
Thank goodness.
Appreciate that very much. Okay, thank you, chief.
Yes, sir. Consent agenda for C. Consider a resolution authorizing the annual procurement of senior meal program services with Visiting Nurse Association of Texas in the unit of Mount Villa through the City of Grand Prairie Corporate Purchasing Agreement, number two-two-one-four-zero, with an annual estimated expenditure amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. And Mr. Stevenson is here to answer any questions that you may have. But this item is for feeding our seniors at our senior center. Mr. Stevenson, you got any, anything you'd like to add?
No, just that this program is one hundred percent supported by a federal grant through D triple A, so the city has made a whole to this.
And we're feeding about approximately how many through that, do you know?
For me?
Approximately how many seniors we feed through the VNA?
Um, that probably fifty to sixty a day.
Sixty a day.
And that's just here.
That's just here.
Correct. It's not what VNA does.
They do, they provide most of the meal services in Dallas, while they're...
And I do know that on Wednesdays, I guess, the services we have, the meals and service that we have here in our city at the rec center, if anybody would like to help serve those meals or come in and help distribute. There's a lot of drive-throughs still going on, started with COVID, but there's a lot of drive-throughs in the business.
Drive-through is in.
Sorry?
Drive-through is in. It's in-person only.
Oh, it is?
It's in-person only.
See, I'm glad I said something. So drive-through is in.
Drive-through is in.
Okay, so to serve it, you gotta be certified and all the rest of the stuff. So never mind. Unless you get certified as a food handler, I guess.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, everything is an update? That's good. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. I appreciate that. All right.
Okay, the last consent agenda item is item four D. Adoption of an ordinance regarding the request of David Jones, applicant, representing Chris Kachason.
Kajason.
Kachason, close.
Very close.
Owner for his zoning change for DD Downtown District to LOR Local Office Retail District on Richard F. Hall, ABST five-six-six PG zero-eight-zero TR eighteen, more commonly known as six-oh-nine and six-eleven South Main Street in the city of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. And if you recall, mayor council, a public hearing was held on this item at our last city council meeting. And our development services team and Mr. Hager are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I had a question, because I remember that we approved the zoning at our last meeting on this particular item, and I'm just wondering, why do we have it again? And the answer was, is last time we approved the zoning of it, and now we're approving the ordinances that implement the zoning changes that we approved last time. So while it appeared duplicitous to me, then I once understood the details of it. That's why we have it again tonight.
And we've been doing this because there are many times when the council wants to add conditions, and that keeps us from having to try to make them during the meeting. So if you want something or add something to the zoning case, then that gives us time to get it properly prepared, so we're not trying to do it on the fly.
Right, right. So any other questions, comments, input on the side? Okay, thank you. Interim city manager, Brown.
Yes, sir. I think that concludes the agenda.
Yes, that concludes the consent agenda. And then we'll go into item number two for our work session. That's the city council calendar. Associate Secretary Jenny Willman, any updates, changes on that?
Thank you, Mayor. Just some brief things that went into now, obviously Thursday of this week, April twenty of this year. And it's been moved to the city council chambers. Monday, May fifteenth is the earliest day that we can, because that's the day anticipated that Dallas County election will have the final results from the election. And then just briefly touching back on these recommended budget dates. April twenty-seventh, because it's next week, a week from this Thursday, is the town hall at the Hopkins Senior Center, starting at six P.M. and hopefully ending by eight P.M. And then we sent out a doodle request to the council to select between June eighth or June fifteenth for the council's pre-budget workshop. And then the only other thing that we have is that the council would consider at some point, and you don't have to do it now, but going forward, that our first city council meeting in July is the National Holiday, July fourteenth.
So as I understand it, then you did send out a doodle request for calendar preferences for the eighth or the fifteenth in June.
Yes.
But it's still showing as an or, so that means we don't have a decision yet?
Not yet.
So has everybody voted?
No.
Without naming names, if you haven't yet voted, please vote your preferences so we can select either the eighth or the fifteenth for the pre-budget workshop. It's very important that we get that nailed down now. Okay? That's the first thing I looked at when I saw the calendar, was looking for that date in June to see when we had locked it down, so we still have not yet done that. All right, okay. Any comments, questions?
Sean, I'm thanking this woman for getting this out and getting through August as well, because it is important, because this is left in front of us.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other things on the calendar? All right, moving on to brief presentations, a lab property update, Mr. Tanner.
Order, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Council, tonight I'm here to give you guys an update on the updates of the events that have occurred since our last meeting about last month. As you all recall, this is our calendar that we continue to show you all. We are basically on track right now. We are in the section right now where we're at the beginning of April, where we're looking into filing an application for a zoning change for the text amendment, which we are going to basically file with the planning and zoning, so that way it can come through the proper channels, so that way it'll be heard by you all for your ultimate recommendation, we also made, excuse me, decision on the property. Then, of course, we've talked about the previous ones, we just touched base on it, just as a reminder. We have step five, which, of course, will prepare the case report and send notifications out within two hundred feet, which is a state requirement by law here within the state of Texas to inform those neighbors of the changes that would be occurring around them. Next, we will be basically taking that to the Planning and Zoning Commission, where we will basically get their recommendation, which we've come to this body as stated earlier, for the ultimate decision. All right, next, we're looking at June for planning and zoning, for that, before planning and zoning, June of twenty twenty-three, where we will, at that time, basically have that tax amendment and everything for planning and zoning to make that recommendation. And then, of course, July is the timeline that we have currently on par for that decision as stated earlier. All right.
Roll back one.
Yes, sir.
Unless you're gonna get to it, can you be, do you have any better range on step five versus the end of April, beginning of May? Is it looking a little tighter? Or if not, it's okay, you don't need to say anything, but I'm just wondering if there's a little tighter date that you might be looking at there?
Well, we have a meeting for planning the zoning the second Monday of the month. That's when we're looking at having that planned for that particular time.
Okay, very good.
Yes. Any other questions that I regard? All right, just to let you all know, on a no basis, as the last, the time we spoke, we're trying to basically get in touch with all the boards and commissions to basically make them aware of what was occurring. So we have talked to five, keep Duncanville beautiful, of course, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Economic Development Corporation, the Neighbor Vitality Commission, as well as the Park and Recreation Advisory. We have met with all of them, they're aware, and we're waiting recommendations from those bodies as well.
Do they have deadlines in order to send anything back?
Yes, they have. Some of them do have deadlines, but we're meeting with them so that way we can confirm that for the next ones, yes.
We need to keep this rolling as long as we can.
Oh, yes.
Place deadlines on them for getting information.
Yes, sir. We're on par, yes, sir. Okay, just to kind of let you all know, we had two meetings, successful meetings. We tried to do three meetings. Unfortunately, due to the weather, we were limited to just two meetings. So that was on March tenth for the first meeting and March twenty-third for the next meeting. These are some pictures from those active meetings that we did, all taken. All right, just to kind of go a little step on where we've gone so far. We have completed the public meetings with the boards and municipal commissions. We are getting information back from them as well. As also the public input process period, we are actually waiting for UCD, because we basically outsourced that to our UCD stakeholders to process the information, to provide to us, to assist us with this process, to help with that tight timeline. So we're waiting on that information to come back. This, of course, was ironically during their spring break. So I definitely want to commend those students, because they took their time, some of them during the spring break, to actually come and help with, to conduct these meetings. So I do want to give them a shout out and appreciation for that as well. And again, the community meetings are being completed and input, as you asked earlier, Mr. Mayor, we are getting information from the boards and commissions. And again, I already went through the steps three through seven, but this is just a slide to just kind of take you any closer to it. If there are any specific questions on it, I verbalized it earlier. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to entertain those right now.
Do you want a quick question or comment? How is the relationship with UCD, the master's program, and with our staff?
In what regard?
Good.
I think it's pretty good.
I mean, is there, is there open communication between this and y'all in terms of what they're finding, what they're thinking, and what they're seeing in terms of staff giving back and forth in conversation?
Yes, yes, answer your question, that's definitely yes to that. And also to go a little bit farther, during our meetings, we actually have breakout sessions after the meeting when everybody left, to make sure that we're all capturing and actually talking, understanding the old dynamic of the meetings and all, and also the communications that we received via the print that we received. But yes, we were all able to take that into context after a follow meeting. Now we're just waiting for them to pull all that data together and then share with us, and I'll hope in that regard. But yes, we were all able to take that into context after a profound meeting. Now, we're just waiting for them to pull all that data together and then share with us, and I'll hope in that regard.
I know this is part of their capstone for their masters, for their masters program. I did, I think we all had an opportunity to meet with the chair of the business department that's watching over this.
Doctor Harrington, yes.
This cohort. Is the plan then, for once they complete their analysis and assessment, is it going to him before it comes to us, or is there going to be a joint kind of move on?
It's gonna go to them, because again, it is a capstone. I actually do own it, I want to say about two decades ago now, to tell my age. Yes, it is something that you definitely want to share in ours, because this is how they learn to become better professionals. Uh, and that way, there's no, none of the, um, uh, political aspects of it, if you will, because this is what they, how they get their teeth wet and the whole software system of things, if you will. So, that is, there's a divide there on purpose.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I kind of alluded to this earlier, but in this part, this is my official slide. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, sir.
So, I think what I'm hearing is that everything's on schedule.
That is accurate, yes, sir.
We're tracking to meet the deadlines that y'all are doing.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate y'all being, uh, on top of this, keeping it moving forward, I think, of the staff for that. Um, what's the, so the status of the text amendment? So, that, that will not be drafted until after we get the data back from the U T D.
Yes, that is accurate, because we wanted to utilize the meetings, and that's one of the purposes of the meetings, and one of the component was for the lab property aspect. So, we can get a feel for what exactly they want, the, the community want things to be. And we want to capture that and bring that, and, uh, it was alluded to during, I think, our second meeting, we want to bring that data forth. And again, that's when planning the zoning, and also you guys, the body, have an opportunity to chew it down, and basically give your, um, statements on it as well. But we at least need to have that as a foundation to pull from, for the conversation to start from.
And so, we'll, we'll get to see the data before text amendment is drafted?
Yes. Because it'll be a, for you specifically, because of course, it'll be available for planning the zoning to answer that question more accurately.
That kind of follows in what I was thinking also, Mr. Coates, is that as they prepare their data, and then it's reviewed by their department chair, the department chair is looking at in terms of its applicability and its usability for us as a council. And as the staff looks at it when it comes to us for the use of that text amendment, which is critical. Now, Mr. Carter.
Um, of the, uh, is the U T D's team interacting directly with you?
No, they're acting Nathan Warren, our senior planner, I guess.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, this is not an interactive session. Have some conversation later if you're, during these sessions. It's not an interactive session. Okay.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you. That concludes our work session briefing time, so I will turn it over to Mr. Hager. Do we have adequate time, do you believe, to go into executive session concluded by the time we come back out by seven?
Yes.
All right, very good. All right, so we will then recess. Timestamp on this. It's gonna be six eighteen, City Secretary. And citizens, please vacate the room.
Crossroads of Life Pastor Laurie, please rise.
It's good to see you guys. We just wanna thank you for all that you do on behalf of Crossroads of Life and just your service and everything that you do for our community. So, Father, we just thank you. We thank you for the opportunity, Lord, that you give us to pray over each person that's here tonight, Lord, and what they're gonna be doing. Father, we thank you. We believe that you have just selected them to do business, Father, on behalf of this beautiful city, Lord. We just pray that you continue to help them, give them wisdom, give them guidance, Father, and as we continue to grow as a community, that we can be an example, Lord, not just to the surrounding areas, Father, but this region and this state, Father, that we can just be a light and show them, Father, how community can be done, Father. And we just continue to pray in the right businesses, the right people, just the right things into this beautiful city, and we thank you for that. In Jesus's name, amen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Time is officially seven P M. And it is Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, officially calling for order in our city council meeting, up city of Duncanville, at this particular time. Thank you very much for being here with us tonight. Presenting for one of the two is having implication, an implication, Robert, Pastor Harvey Gettner, from Crossroads of Life, Pastor Laurie. Please rise.
Crossroads of Life and just your service and everything that you do for our community. So, Father, we just thank you. We thank you for the opportunity, Lord, that you give us to pray over each person that's here tonight, Lord, and what they're gonna be doing. Father, we thank you. We believe that you have just selected them to do business, Father, on behalf of this beautiful city, Lord. We just pray that you continue to help them, give them wisdom, give them guidance, Father, and as we continue to grow as a community, that we can be an example, Lord, not just to the surrounding areas, Father, but this region and this state, Father, that we can just be a light and show them, Father, how community can be done, Father. And we just continue to pray in the right businesses, the right people, just the right things into this beautiful city, and we thank you for that. In Jesus's name, amen.
In accordance with the policy of the city of Duncanville during the period of election time which we are now in, the mayor's reports, the council members' reports, and citizen comments are muted in terms of any broadcasting. So, I'm going to take a minute to make sure that the broadcasting, the audio is going to be shut down. The broadcasting media will be here in Council Chamber. If you hear everything in terms of broadcasting on the swag and social media, it's going to be muted. Audio will continue. So, I want to make sure that that's happened before we proceed any further. Mike check. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Mike check. Mike check. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six. Mike check. One, two, three, four, five. You can sit here. Thank you. Please bear with us. Want to make sure we're doing this right. Mike check. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Still here. Mike check. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Mike check. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Mike check. We are back on. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number two on our agenda, proclamations and presentations. The first item is a proclamation and recognition of Earth Day in Duncanville, two thousand twenty-three. Presenting this will be council member Karen Cherry, and receiving it will be Mr. Tyler Agee, Assistant Director of Parks and Recre- Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, everyone. Office of the Mayor, Duncanville, City of Champaign's proclamation, whereas the global community continues to face extraordinary challenges such as environmental degradation, extreme weather events, resource shortages, and global health issues, and whereas the city of Duncanville recognizes the important role that our nature, environment plays in maintaining a healthy so- society and strong envi- sorry, and strong economy, and whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have the right to a healthy, sustainable environment and economic growth and opportunity, and whereas we are all caretakers of our planet and have an obligation to combat climate challenge and environmental degradation to preserve the earth's beauty and resources, and whereas Earth Day is a time to celebrate the goal of inspirman- inspiring environmental awareness and encouraging the conservation, protection, and appreciation of our natural resources, and whereas a sustainable environment environment can be achieved on an individual level through education efforts, public policy, and is the responsibility of each of us to safeguard our environments and resources. Now, therefore, Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, does hereby proclaim April the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three as Earth Day in Duncanville, and encourages all business, institutions, and individuals to celebrate the earth through one's own action and in the support of the city's own growing sustainability initiatives.
Thank you, Councilmember Cherry. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation, and this proclamation is in recognition of Jewish American Heritage Month, and receiving this particular proclamation is Dr. Jeffrey Feinberg, Professor of Hebrew Studies at the Dallas International University, Professor Feinberg. And anyone else with you would like to have come up there, most more than welcome to come up with you. I know this is your wife, Pat, this gentleman? Oh, Rabbi Jasslo.
God bless you.
Bless you. I see your emails a lot.
I see yours too.
Come over here.
Yes, thank you.
So, whereas in 1654, a small ship carrying twenty-three Jewish refugees sailed into the port of present-day New York City, and whereas the small band of courageous men and women were fleeing oppression and discrimination, and they faced resistance from colony leaders, and whereas they became the first Jewish communal presence on American soil, and whereas they expanded the frontier of religious freedoms that would help define the bedrock of American principles on which this country was founded, and whereas throughout our country's history, Jewish Americans have proudly served our nation in uniform, and elected office, and on our nation's highest courts, and whereas Jewish Americans have made significant contributions to America's cultural, scientific, artistic, and intellectual life, and whereas Jewish Americans have marched, marched, petitioned, and boarded buses to demand civil and political rights for all, from women's rights to voting rights to workers' rights. Therefore I, Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim May, 2025, as Jewish American Heritage Month. We are pleased and proud to do this for us. Would you like to say a few words?
Very grateful to be here, as a blessing to Duncanville, and to Texas, and to the United States. Brought with me Rabbi Steve Jasslo, who has a congregation in Duncanville, and of course Pat and I are Duncanville residents, and we train people to go to the ends of the earth to translate the word of God, both the Hebrew scriptures and the Greek scriptures, to make good on a pledge made long ago by our Lord Jesus Christ, to go to the end of the world, to tell every nation that he's risen from the grave. It's my pleasure to be a part of the historic heritage of Jewish people praying for and blessing the American citizenry, and I do that as an American Jew. On that note, I'd like to, from the city council and to the, to all you sitting out there, say a blessing, the Aaronic benediction, I'll say it in the Hebrew and then in the English. The Lord bless you and keep you, the Lord make his face to shine upon you and be gracious unto you, the Lord turn his face to you and give you peace, the peace that passes understanding.
Thank you, take a few, Francisco, a few photos. Tell me what else. Thank you. Are Lakeisha and Kevin Berry here? Lakeisha, Kevin didn't make it? He's busy, he's busy, well, you'll be able to explain where he is when we get done. Well, one of the other things that is my honor and pleasure to do is to recognize champions of our city, and one of the opportunities I have is to do this tonight and to recognize Lakeisha and Kevin Berry, come over here. Duncanville residents for fifteen years, and Grambling State University graduates, Lakeisha and Kevin Berry founded the Duncanville Tigers Youth Organization in 2013, a nonprofit to serve, train, and mentor student athletes in academic pursuits, while the organization was conceived to help their two sons, both graduates of Duncanville High School, it now serves two hundred-plus families and over six hundred students in the Duncanville area. Lakeisha and Kevin manage all operations for the organization and fund it primarily themselves. Their mentees have achieved local, state, and national recognition in football, track and field, and cheer, and competing in aiming for the stars African-American male academic bowls. Assisted today by a strong group of volunteers, they both provide free tutoring to students, athletes, three to five times weekly. Their twofold goal is to mentor both student athletes and volunteers to continue their legacy. In their own words, "As long as there is a need, we will make available ourselves available to serve." For their investment in and substantive and sustainable impact on our city, Lakeisha and Kevin Berry are hereby recognized as champions of the city. As Mayor of the City of Duncanville, I ask our residents to join me in congratulating them on this memorable occasion. Lakeisha, congratulations. And along with that is a medallion for our city, and talking with you earlier about coming tonight, I know you, it's like you had to juggle schedules, so take a second or minute to talk about what you do and where Kevin is right now.
Well, thank you all, thank you Mayor Gordon, thank you all for allowing this time in your ceremony tonight to recognize us, we appreciate it. As Mayor Gordon stated, we are in the middle of practice tonight, we're, our track and field season is in progress, we coach about, I think we have about fifty kids right now, and that's where Kevin is, some of you may know him as Coach Berry, he's the guy that you typically walk up to any park, whether it's Reed or over at Lakeside, he's the ball guy that's typically yelling at the kids, but he's over holding practice down, and as soon as I'm done, I'll head back over to him, but again, thank you for recognizing us, we certainly appreciate this opportunity to be recognized.
All right, it is an honor and a pleasure for us to do that for our folks in our city. Item number three is citizens' input. Pursuant to section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or an imposed agenda item, however, the act prohibits the city council from delivering any issues not on the public agenda, and such non-agenda issues may be referred to city staff for research and any future action. All persons addressing are subject to council rules and limitations permitted by law. Our current limitations and rules that we have, number one, excuse me, we no longer read out loud any citizen's inputs that are emailed to us, however, each of us here on the council that goes into the record, we receive those, and each of us has one of those, we've received one this particular week, and each of us on members of the council has that input, and we have, will have read it and be made part of the record. The other limitation is individuals who are here in present and wish to speak to us during citizen comment period are limited to a two-minute timeframe, and when I call you forward, please state your name and your address for the record. So I have one and only card here with me tonight, and that is Homer Finn Cannon.
Mayor.
Yeah, we're supposed to be turning off the citizen, the, the audio for this as well. We are back on, thank you very much. Okay, just as one note of housekeeping on the agenda, you will note that we had an executive session that has been completed, we're going to take the, where it says take action necessary as a result of executive session, that is going to become item number seven on the agenda, we're adding that at the very end of our agenda tonight. Moving on to item number four, the consent agenda. The following may be acted upon in one motion, the city council member may request items be removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration, none of that has been done, so city secretary, please read the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda item 4A, consider approval of draft city council meeting minutes for the special called city council meeting of March 14th, 2023. 4B, consider an ordinance amending Chapter 19 Traffic, Article 1, in general, Section 19-1, definitions by adding a definition for oversized vehicles by amending Chapter 19 Traffic, Article 6, stopping, standing, and parking by amending Section 19-115, standing or parking of trucks, tractors, and trailers and commercial vehicles by amending Section 19-116, no parking and/or placement of oversized vehicles, storage unit, cargo container, or recreational vehicle on city streets by adding subsections B and C and renumber current subsection B to subsection D. C, consider a resolution authorizing the annual procurement of senior meal program services with Visiting Nurse Association of Texas in the unit amount bid through the City of Grand Prairie Cooperative Purchasing Agreement Number 22140 with an annual estimated expenditure amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. D, adoption of an ordinance regarding the request of David Jones, applicant representing Chris Kajacian?
Kajacian.
Okay. Owner for a zoning change from DD Downtown District to LOR Local Office Retail District on Richard F. Hale Abstract, 566 Page 080, tract 18, more commonly known as 609 and 611 South Main Street in the city of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas.
Thank you, Chair Luntina, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember McBurnett, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Contreras, council please vote. Thank you unanimously approved. Moving on to items for individual consideration, item number 5A, consider a resolution approving an incentive grant by the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation, DCEDC, to D Squared Catering LLC in the amount of six thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars sixty-two cents for qualified expenditures for a building located at 519 East Highway 67, Duncanville 75116. Mr. Mansell, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. Tonight we have a signage grant request from D Squared Catering LLC in the amount of six thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and sixty-two cents per your agenda packet tonight, you'll notice that also in the presentation that this is the highest bid amount that they got from their three bids per our policy, and the DCEDC approved this unanimously. I would like to also point out that this property is within opportunity area number one, which one of the things that we seek to do in this area per the comp plan is to identify non-conforming properties and work with property owners to relocate or bring the property into compliance. As you may remember, they have been here before for some other incentives related to the relocation, it was a business retention grant to keep them here related to some infrastructure improvements to bring the facility into compliance, they successfully got their CEO, and now the, the kind of cherry on top is the signage to help illustrate their catering business at this location. Also in your packet, you should have the three bids which outline the different signs that they are proposing, and you can see it here as well, all of the signs being proposed are, are lit signs, they're, they're backlit LED, and so they'll, they'll really pop there on Highway 67. Per their taxable revenue from their property tax at the location, in addition to their sales tax revenue to the city, they generate about ten thousand dollars a year to the city in, in tax, and so to recoup this grant would take us about point six, seven years to recuperate, and we look at a, a rule of thumb of within ten years, and so that definitely meets that guideline as well, and I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Just one quick question, roll back one slide if you would, I know that the, okay, the business generated is, was in their the business generated was in their prior location. This is a new location for D Squared.
Correct, and the property tax.
Those business dollars revenues were in their old location, correct?
Correct. These property, the property tax here is their new location.
Is their new location. In addition to the new, but we don't know new revenues. I'm not asking that question. I'm just saying that the sales tax for that particular next-to-last bullet, the 7564, was in their old location.
That is correct.
There's no estimation on future.
Correct, since they just opened at their new location.
Right, okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Chair Lintana, motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. McNabb, second by Mr. Koontz. Council, please vote. Thank you unanimously approved. Item 5B, consider approving a grant of hotel occupancy and tax funds from the 2022-23 budget and authorizing the execution of a grant funding agreement in an amount not to exceed $36,000 to E-Spersion Incorporated. Mr. Gus Garcia, Director of our Economic Development Services, presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Augustine Garcia, Managing Director of Development Services. Thank you for having us here tonight. Before you is an application grant for hot tax funds for an event that's going to be taking place in the City of Duncanville next month. Happy to say that esports, somewhat of a misnomer, esports is bridging the gap between art, education, and sports. Video games are packages of many forms of art in the form of design, writing, music, as well as many other fields. Campuses across America are incorporating esports into their educational curriculum, graphic design, artistic expression, coding, et cetera. The number of high schools, universities adding esports to their extracurricular offerings has increased exponentially over the past several years. There are over 1,200 high school esports teams and over 170 collegiate esports teams, many of which offer scholarships to qualified students. A little bit of background regarding this grant. In 2020, in 2022, E-Spersion hosted the first Texas High School and Middle School Esports Championships. In January 2023, E-Spersion hosted the Unified Pro Amateur Association Regionals in partnership with the NBA. UPA is the acronym. You'll see in a few minutes. May 5th through 7th, 2023 will be the second Texas High School Middle School Esports Championships hosted by E-Spersion. I have a representative from E-Spersion, the actual owner, next to me, standing next to me, Mr. Danny Martin. The attendance has doubled with 400 registrants. Bringing esports competitions to Duncanville has been a mission of E-Spersion, and the nation is taking notice. E-Spersion is developing the next generations of professionals, and by professionals, we mean the next generations of graphic designers, game developers, and producers. It's no longer just gaming. It's actual productions, and you'll hear a little bit about that in a few minutes. The benefits of Duncanville, in 2022, 40 hotels were reserved and used. In January 2023, 160 hotels, rooms were reserved and used. 60 rooms were reserved, 150 people for the UPA Regionals. 250 people attended the event. Ninety percent of the attendees did not reside in Texas. 100 rooms have been reserved, 350 people for the Texas Esports Championships. 400 people attended the event, are expected to attend the event. Ninety percent of participants are expected from outside of Duncanville. Traveling teams are asked to purchase hotels in Duncanville for a discounted rate, a term we call stay to play. So the grant explanation, April 18, 2023, council meeting of the Texas Esports Championships, a $36,000 grant is being requested. $18,000 will be spent in the Austin, San Antonio, and Houston market. These are going to be for promotional expenses, which qualifies under the Hot Fund Expenditure Program. $18,000 we spent on promotional materials to be advertised and global online broadcast. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, these are productions. Mr. Martin can probably talk a little bit more about that, so do you wish. These are some of the events he's held at the center. They're off of the expressway, and that's all I have. So if you have any questions.
Thank you. Might want to ask Mr. Martin, I'm familiar with Danny and what he does over at E-Spersion. If any council have not been able to come over there to see that operation and understand what it's about, I really invite you to go on over there. Ms. Cherry.
I was just going to say, I agree. I have opportunity to visit your place, and it is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Same thing. I'm very familiar with Mr. Martin, his operations. Been on the place there. I'd encourage citizens to go there as well to see what his operation is about. And Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. McNabb. We do have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Cherry. Before taking the, I just want to say thank you to Danny Martin for bringing E-Spersion to our city. It's a fantastic, it's a superb operation in terms of what you've done to the physical aspects of it and making it a, what should we say, putting Duncanville on the map for esports throughout the entire globe for what's happening. So we do thank you for that. So council members, please vote. We have a motion to approve. Unanimously approved. Thank you for your, for all that you do for our city.
Thank you, thank you.
Item 5C, consent and ordinance of the City of Duncanville, Texas approving and adopting an increase in the exemption of appraised value of residence homesteads in the city from $30,000 to $35,000 of appraised value for an adult who is 65 years of age or older. An increase to the exemption of appraised value of residence homesteads in the city from $30,000 to $35,000 of appraised value for an adult who receives disability insurance benefits under federal old age, survivors, and disability insurance, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 18 Taxation, Article 1 in general, by amending subsection 18.4 Title from Reserve to Levy of Property Tax, and adding language by amending subsection 18.5 Title from Reserve to Residence Homestead Exemption for Senior Citizen, and adding language, and by amending subsection 18.6 from Reserve to Residence Homestead Exemption for Disabled, and adding language. Turning this over to Jennifer Ovee, our Chief Innovation Officer.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So yes, kicking off the 23-24 budget year, and when we preparing the 22-23 budget, we had committed to bringing this back to you in this tax year for '23 to consider increasing the senior citizen and disabled homestead exemption by 5,000. So as you've read, the $30,000 to $35,000 of appraised value, that estimated impact, I calculated based on the 22 certified tax values, I calculate that to be about 109,000, but again, that's on the 22 values. The last year that we did a revision was in 2018, when we brought it from 26,400 up to 30,000. So that is purpose number one of this ordinance, and then number two, of course, is adding the language into the Code of Ordinances as it is not referenced about exemptions in our Code of Ordinance language currently. Just to give you an idea of dates, the reason why this is being brought forth to you, at this time, this Dallas Central Appraisal District has a deadline of April 25th. If we want to have this in their hands, so they can have it for the preliminary EVR, which is the Estimate of Value Report that they release on May 8th. Additionally, they have a deadline of July 3rd, if it's not by April 25th, for the certified roles to have this ordinance for them to make the changes. Just to give you an idea of what, on April 13th, we had a virtual meeting with Dallas Central Appraisal District to give us their calendar, as well as what they are planning and their trends, so we know what to expect when it comes to property values. So they, per Dallas Central Appraisal District entities, will see an increase in market value as market remains positive, meaning the supply of homes are low, but the supply is still up from 2022. Entities' market and taxable values will increase due to 23 reappraisal efforts and capped homestead recalculations. So for the City of Duncanville, their reappraisal plan is 71% of residential homes will be reappraised this year, and commercial reappraisal plans will be 55%. Just to kind of give you context of what we can expect with values for this 2023 tax year. I know if you've been keeping up, following with the legislation, there's certainly a lot of property tax conversations happening at the state. Mainly, the city is mainly targeting school districts, from what I've read, in terms of the property tax exemptions, trying to relieve the burden on residential homeowners. But something just to keep in mind that is on the move currently, passed the House, and it's in the state senate, and not have any, certainly bearing, I think, on the city, but that they are imposing a 5% appraisal cap. Right now, it's at 10%. So if that is passed by the senate, that'll go to the voters in November of '23. But just in all context, when it comes to property tax, wanted to share that information with you as well. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you. So if this particular initiative passes, then the next step would be that the city would contact the appraisal district and let them know, hey, by the way, this ordinance has passed, and they will reflect it in their property tax calculations that they will be doing over the next few weeks, and it would be reflected in the bills that will come out in October.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor and Council, just for the record, I know some of us are older than the rest of us and may be qualified, but it's an ordinance of general application, not specific application. So all the members that may otherwise qualify for this exemption can vote.
Say that again, please. You trailed off right here at the end.
If we're, if any of you are over 65, you can still vote.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. One last question. This applies to the appraisals that are going to, that we will receive residents for property taxes in 2023 or not reflected until 2024?
It'll be for this tax year, 2023, that they'll get at the end of this year, that they'll pay January 1st.
Which will affect our budget process that we're entering into as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. McNabb, second by Mr. Harvey. Please vote. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, staffing and board reports. Received the Police Department's quarterly report, Chief Levigny. Floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for the opportunity to report on the Police Department's first quarter report from this year. First, I'd like to point out, as I try to do as much as possible, that we are an accredited department by the Texas Police Chiefs Association, and that's important for our citizens to know because we have to go through a stringent, stringent number of, over 168 items that we have to show that we're compliant with, both through our policy and our practice. So that just shows that our folks, they work very hard to attain that and keep that level where it is. Staffing and personnel, we've got several officers that are in different types of training. We've got an officer that's currently in field training, and she seems to be progressing very well. And Jessica Dederman, recruit Paul Becerra, as you might see, just graduated the Basic Police Academy last Friday, and he's doing well. He's a grandson of a 42-year retiree of the Dallas Police Department. So we're happy to have him. We've got two recruits, Ashley Garcia and Rosio Vasquez, in the Dallas County Sheriff's Department Academy, and we are planning a civil service entry exam test for May 20th. Some more staff development, in-service training for several of our supervisors there is listed. FBI LEADER Program is a Law Enforcement Executive Development Association program that the FBI puts together, and it's very good training, and it keeps our supervisory staff on the cutting edge of what leadership training and so forth. Our regional care team, as you know, Ambrosio Hernandez is part of that regional care team and does an excellent job for us. In this quarter, those are the numbers. And again, numbers can't explain the connections he makes, and those, the ways that we minimize our, our staff that have to go out and repeat calls, and we keep that in check by this team, and allowing us to maybe reduce the emergency apprehensions that our patrol function has to follow up on. So he does a good job there. Patrol activity in comparison at a glance, as you can see there, the same quarter for '23 and '22, our calls for service have increased dramatically, and the citations there has been requested, or I'm sorry, the traffic stops have also increased, and then the top five cited violations are at the bottom, as requested. FMFR is basically an insurance citation. I know that was asked last time. Then speeding, no driver's license, expired registration, and driving while licensed invalid. Citizen patrol, our BMV report cards and what they've done over the quarter, the different locations that are listed there, January, February, March, and pass rates going up, at least when we're going out. We can't tell our citizens enough or ask for their help to, you know, lock, hide, or take their belongings when they're leaving their vehicles unattended. So apparently, we're getting the message out, at least when we're going out and monitoring that. Department activity, number of use force incidents over the period, we had six, and all of them were within policy and lawful. Number of vehicle pursuits, we had two. They were within our policy and guidelines. Number of complaints, we had one policy violation which was sustained. Community engagement, Officer Michelle Arias is very heavily involved in this area of our department, but she needs help, and all of our people should be ambassadors for community engagement. We've got one in the back, does a good job in helping with that where he can, and several other folks that are pictured here and that just get out in the community in general. There's our Knobbers Group A offenses for the quarter. Stay pretty steady. We're down slightly, if you kind of look through that. Give you just a couple of seconds.
If you would take a moment to explain what the cleared column actually indicates for us.
So cleared can be done in several different ways. We have, cleared means if we've investigated an offense, and we've been able to either make an arrest, or in some other way, we know the suspect, but because of some extenuating circumstances, we either, maybe they are no longer with us, maybe there's prosecutorial discretion that they don't want to prosecute a case, or there's several other different ways in which an exceptional clearance may take place. Clearance is a good thing through which we can affirmatively say, we know who did this. We either put them in jail, or for whatever other reason, we're not going to be able to follow through. Maybe a, maybe a victim who fought, maybe I don't want to prosecute after I reported something. So those are some examples there.
Okay. Mr. Harvey, please.
Thank you. Chief, piggybacking on a question about the clearance rates, that's usually a function that's handled by the Criminal Investigation Division, right?
In many cases, certainly. There are some times when our patrol officers go out, and they answer a call, they investigate preliminarily, and they can make an arrest there on the scene, and that is a clearance. But in many ways, people think of Criminal Investigation Division of clearing cases. Yes, sir.
Right. And going back to one of your first slides, I noticed that Officer Luna, notwithstanding your force appears to be getting younger.
We're always getting younger, I think.
Okay. That wasn't anything that needed a response. Okay. That, that wasn't anything that needed a response. But on a serious note, you mentioned the accreditation process. And so when is the next round of accreditation scheduled? And how do you all go about ramping up for it?
So first of all, it's an ongoing process. Every year, we have to submit approvals that we're still in compliance. Every four years, we will actually get an assessor to come to our location, to, to our department, and we'll evaluate everything that we say we're doing by policy, and evaluate if that's being carried out to the extent they can for, typically here for two to three days. And they'll evaluate through conversations with individuals, through watching how we take calls, and again, just checking to make sure we're in compliance with what we say we are. We had one, I believe, it was two years ago, so I think we're still two years out for the four-year recertification, re-recognition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So here's a, a slide. Now, you'll notice that we've got positive feedback on, in the past. You'll notice DeSoto, when we checked on this in preparation for this report, and there could be a number of reasons, you know, maybe they saw something they needed to take a look at before it came out and got approved through, through the Knibber site. But DeSoto had not reported their March numbers, and that's, that's why it's not showing up there. Pretty well in line with kind of what we've seen normally. We, we dropped off quite a bit, as you can see there, in February. You know, I, I don't necessarily have a good reason for that. Sometimes crime goes up, goes down, and you just don't have. I will tell you that there was a lot of, a lot of talk over the last, during this period, and Dallas Police Department, they, they mentioned their violent crime had gone down, and they were measuring that. And they can, their violent crime consisted of homicides, aggravated assaults, and I believe it was robberies. And I went back and looked at, at ours as well. That's not something, you know, you can put a group of offenses together and call it what you want, but that's what they were measuring on. There was a lot of media attention on that. Ours, over the last three years, have by and large gone down steadily. And over the last three years, we were down over thirteen percent in those areas, when you take them cumulatively.
Oh, one moment, Mr. Harvey, please.
Go ahead.
Okay, so Chief, I want to tell you that I personally really appreciate this schedule because it provides a set of context, I think, in terms of how we compare to the cities around us. So I, I just think this is a really great illustration, and, and it really communicates a sense of where we are.
Thanks, sir. So we were trying to get back. I know a couple of y'all had a desire to change up who we're comparing to with motor vehicle thefts. And once we kind of got back on and was trying to get ready for this report tonight, the site was down. And then we were up against the deadline to get this to you guys. It may very well be up, you know, tomorrow. Sometimes it goes down for maintenance, just like everything does with a computer. And just trying to be transparent and give that to y'all. We'll, we'll work out and get that as best we can for every quarterly report as we have been.
So, Mr. Brown, we'd expect, wouldn't that fiddle through to give it to us? Thank you.
Okay.
So here's the breakdown, and I was told, and I believe we have, even though it was only a couple of streets, we've aligned this map and the subsequent maps that you'll see in the slides, to what the city most recently changed their council districts to. So there are the major crimes that we report on, and to give you a couple of seconds, look at that. This is for January.
Chief, I'm going to roll back to the, the Knibber's listing. I received a phone call from a citizen alleging some individuals were having intercourse in front of their house. Where does that fall?
Um, so these are part A offenses.
He said he did call law enforcement. They didn't witness it, but I'm just wondering, looking at that list, I was trying to figure out where would that fall?
So I'd have to know more circumstances, but it, it could very well fall under eleven or thirty-six. It potentially could fall under forty. Just would have to have more circumstances for a specific incident. And, and then we're assuming if somebody called that there was something to, they wanted to report something, or they were still there when we got there. So potentially, one of those three is the best answer I can give you.
Yeah. They did say that the, it was not occurring when law enforcement showed up. So it's, it's really hard for our law, for a police officer to determine where that falls. I was just curious about it.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, there's February for the same offenses. And March. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sorry. Yeah, Mr. Gutierrez.
After or before? Well, I, I think that's attributed mostly to our officer's self-initiated activity, and mainly most attributable to extra patrols. We get a lot, I mean, we look at this map, and we, we alert our officers, hey, listen, we're having issues up in this area, we're having issues up in this area. And officers understand that through their training and experience of being on the streets, they know typical problem locations for different things. So I think a lot of that can be attributable to just our officers, you know, making those extra patrols and documenting that. Because that's important, because we could get a report later, it may help us on, I mean, obviously, it may catch somebody in the act of something, but it may help us in investigating something if we can kind of tighten that window of when something may have occurred.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. And always, I'm sure, I speak for the entire council, we so much appreciate our law enforcement, from very, very top, all the way down to those officers on the beat. And we see our patrol cars in neighborhoods, we see our patrol cars around our shopping areas, and we thank all of our officers for all that they do in putting themselves in harm's way every day.
They do a great job, don't they? We appreciate it, council.
Yes, they do. Moving on to item number six B, Fire Department Quarterly Report Update for the Second Quarter of the Fiscal Year. Chief Roddy. Chief, floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, council, mayor, city manager. I want to thank y'all for having the Fire Department come down and do our quarterly report. Want to start off with our staffing. We have a new hire. His name is Mason Quinn. He started on February the twenty-sixth of this year, and is in the process of going through orientation and training with our people. He's already a basic certified EMT and firefighter, so we just got to get him where he's up to snuff on the way we do things here in Duncanville. So hopefully, that'll be another couple of weeks, and then we can count him in staffing.
So a quick question. Since he's already certified, where did he get that?
He went to an academy on his own.
Really?
Yeah, he, uh, went through the whole academy, went through EMT and everything, paid his own money, and that's the only way we hire, is you either have to be a certified firefighter or a certified paramedic, or both. And he just happened to be the certified firefighter. And we'll, later, when we get him all oriented, then we'll send him to paramedic school.
There you go. Okay, thank you.
Uh, currently, we have three vacancies that we're fixing to try to get those filled. Before we can do that, we have to give a civil service entrance exam, and we're currently working with HR to get that scheduled, so we can start the process, try to get those three positions filled. On April the twenty-eighth, we intend to give a engineer promotional exam to fill one of our drivers' position, who has vacated that position. And there's the reason for why we do. We have Engineer Steve Blanchard, who was promoted to Fire Marshal on Friday, March the thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three. And then we have firefighter David Carpenter, who will be promoted to Deputy Fire Marshal on Monday, April the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. The good news about that is, initially, we had our Fire Prevention Division, it was just down to an interim fire marshal. So we were getting a lot of inspections done. So now we'll have two people in that division. Of course, Mr. Carpenter will have to go to inspector's school, and then we can go in there, we can start emphasizing inspections throughout the city of Duncanville. Want to talk about professional development. That's a big deal on my books in the Fire Department, is developing my people. Make sure they are aware of standards, policies that need to be enforced. So we do a lot of professional development in, in the department. I attended a TEC's Leadership Conference back January ninth through January the eleventh. We also had our executive assistant, Lacy Freeman, who attended a, the Texas Fire Chiefs Association's Fire Administration Conference at College Station on the twenty-third through the twenty-fifth of January. And my Assistant Chief, Greg Chase, he attended the Texas Fire Chiefs Association's Second in Command Conference at College Station on January twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. Moving along, more professional development. Lexi Poll, which is a program that helps us with our policies, to make sure that they are following best practice standards, and making sure that they meet federal and state and local guidelines, make sure they follow the law according to what those are stated for our policies. We also, I attended a, the Texas Fire Chiefs Association Annual Executive Conference that was in Waco. That was March the twentieth through the twenty-third. And then our new Fire Marshal, he attended the International Association of Arson Investigators Seminar down in San Marcos, March seventeen, or March twenty-seventh through the thirty-first. I'd like to talk about emergency management accomplishments. If everyone's aware, Lauren Sanchez, she's our Emergency Management Operations Coordinator, top of the game. She, we want to make sure that she is very well trained and very well oriented to emergency management. So we had a training session with the city directors, and we brought them into the EOC, and they brought in their desk phones, and they also brought in their computers, and we made sure that they could all make a phone call out of our EOC, or receive a phone call in our EOC, and make sure that their computers could connect to the, to whatever connectivity we need, whether it be the city network, or the websites that they could help, you know, with our, taking care of any kind of EOC emergency that we have. Lauren also has been taking, doing child safety and emergency preparedness. On February the ninth, she held a joint safety and emergency preparedness training with our PD and all of our Duncanville churches, which was very, very productive. She also went to Village Tech, taught their staff CPR.
Just a moment on that. Mr. Harvey had a comment, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, excuse me, Chief. How often do you, do you all do those, I may be using the wrong terminology, tabletop exercises, where you actually simulate an emergency and open up the EOC and go through the process of what to do and when? How, how often do you all do that?
Uh, Councilman Harvey, we used to do that every month. And then a little old problem came up called COVID nineteen, and we had to separate our people. We didn't want them all in the, in the same room. So we kind of slowed down a lot of our, our exercises and tabletops, but we're starting to build that back up and start doing them monthly. It's just a matter of finding time in between all the other little programs that we have going, and we need to get it instituted with all of our city staff again. But we tried to do it on a monthly basis down at the EOC. You're welcome. Duncanville's all, also had a championship parade, as everybody's aware of, and our Emergency Management Coordinator, she went in there and she did the event action plan for that event, and she also helped staffed at the, at the event. And if y'all are all familiar with, she has big time on the grant application for Summit Pump Station Generator, and definitely something that we need. That's, that's a big deal when it comes to, to our water supply here in, in Duncanville. She also, when she was president at the Field House shooting that we had, she was instrumental in our child reunification and family assistance center, and she taught that class at the Emergency Management Association of Texas, and it was very, very well received. She also did some reunification center setup training with our PD supervisors and recreation staff on February twenty-third, and she also was instrumental in, in creating a second reunification center kit for storage at the recreation center. So she has it with her, and we also have the recreation center, so somebody can go in there, they've had the training, they can take that kit and go in there and start setting everything up to, for reunification. She also went and took a class I'd never heard of before, and she, it was called the Complex Coordinated Attack Course, and it has to do with multiple events occurring at one time, such as like a nine-one-one, where they were all, the different buildings, the, the Pentagon, and then the attack that happened in Pennsylvania where the plane dropped. That's what that had to do with. I never knew that they had one, so I was, I was happy that she went to that and, and has an idea how that, how that's worked. She also is our plan administrator. She goes in there and she makes sure that all of our emergency management plans are all up to date. And she went in there and she wrote a plan for a regional, which is our Lancaster, DeSoto, Cedar Hill, and Duncanville Family Assistance Center, which I think will be a valuable plan in the future in case we have some type of event that would call for that type of a plan to be instituted. We also did a regional medically fragile population wellness check plan, which is, we know it as, as STEER. And we discovered yesterday that they have thirty people who were enrolled in the city of Duncanville, and eighteen of those did not respond. So we did get some response from that STEER, but that's where we go and assist these individuals if they have a power outage and they need electricity for certain medically devices, or they need evacuation of the house or something. Want to talk a little bit about, yes, sir?
Let me just interject something, Chief. And I can't speak for the entire council, this is my own personal observations. But when we, our, our former emergency management coordinator, I can't recall her name at the moment.
Tanya Hunter.
Tanya. She was basically ranked by the Department of Public Safety, from what I heard, in, heard personally, like in the top five of the entire state. And I know we were looking at, how do we replace somebody of that caliber? With my personal observations and interactions with Ms. Sanchez during public events and also during actual emergencies, when I've been on site with her, I wanted to say that I feel she has most ably filled those very big shoes. And if you would pass it on for me personally, as I said, I can't speak for the entire council, but from my observations, interaction with her, we have got the best again.
Mayor, I have to agree with you. I know the people are, my counterparts over in Cedar Hill, and DeSoto, and Lancaster, fully agree with you. We, we got another winner when it comes to emergency management. So we're really proud to have her and hope we can keep her, because she's doing an outstanding job with all our emergency management side of everything. And especially on her training, she goes out and makes sure, you know, the different organizations, churches, rec center, all that, have training of what the type of training they need, or she winds up getting the training for them, or organizing, and then she's been writing a lot of grants, so she, she's on top of it. And we really appreciate her. Thank you for the time, and I'll pass it on. And, uh, we really appreciate her. Thank you for the time and I'll pass that on.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, want to talk a little bit about emergency warning sirens. Uh, we haven't talked about it in a while. Uh, here lately, we've had some pretty good storms come through. And, uh, been getting a lot of calls and inquiring about, uh, the emergency sirens. Uh, that a lot of our, uh, community don't understand is these sirens. One thing we need to understand is that this is an outdoor warning siren system. Uh, and it's manually operated. Uh, we have, uh, apps on our phone that will go in there. I can set that off with my app. My Assistant Chief and of course Lauren can set the sirens off with an app on our phone. Uh, we also have a secondary, uh, set off point over there at, uh, SWRCC, which is our dispatch center. And then we also have the primary, which is down in, um, Station two seventy-one, uh, Station two seventy-two in our EOC where we can set off those sirens. Those sirens are set off with criteria. We don't want to cry wolf with those sirens. Uh, their intention is, is to get people out of the parks, get people, you know, out of schoolyards and have them seek shelter and then, um, turn to TV, radio, whatever, to try to find out what's, what's going on. Uh, some of the criteria for that is, uh, a tornado warning issued by the National Weather Service, uh, to affect the city of Duncanville. Uh, several weeks ago, we, I set the sirens off myself twice. The first time was because I was getting confirmed, um, messages that there were eighty mile an hour winds, uh, associated with this front that was coming in. So if you read down, it says destructive winds in excess of seventy miles per hour. We had them at eighty and then they were confirmed a- along that front. So, uh, the initially we set the, um, the sirens off to, uh, indicate they need to take cover because of eighty mile an hour winds. And then we also got a polygon from the National Weather Service that included, uh, Duncanville in that polygon for a tornado wa- uh, warning. Uh, just so everybody knows, you know, there's differences in the storms that you have to look at. Uh, tornado is usually a funnel that has touched the ground. It's, it's doing damage. Uh, a funnel is, uh, circulation that's coming down out of the cloud but has not quite reached the ground yet. And then, uh, circulation up there in the clouds. So you'll see the radars, they'll say, hey, we have circulation in the cloud, but we don't have any confirmed touchdown of a tornado. So we have to monitor all that. We listen to the National Weather Chat so that we can try to get as important a data as we can to make a decision about firing off those sirens. Uh, it also, usually it's a, a severe thunderstorm warning. And it's associated with winds over seventy miles an hour. And as y'all are familiar, uh, hurricane, uh, category one winds are seventy-four miles an hour. So that's getting pretty close to a hurricane strength, uh, storm. Uh, also, uh, inch and a quarter, uh, diameter hail. Well, that's usually associated with a severe thunderstorm warning. And also, um, other emergencies that are directed by the appropriate officials. What that would be, would be like if you have a major, uh, hazardous material spill, like say out on the highways or you may have a, a vapor, a toxic vapor cloud that's coming across guided by the winds in Duncanville. So we'd want to set the sirens off to get people to, to, uh, take shelter. Uh, these sirens usually are heard throughout the whole city. Uh, the only thing I notice is when the wind's blowing eighty miles an hour, they have a tendency that, uh, sound has a tendency to fall with the wind. So, um, it's an indication to get out and get, and, and seek, uh, cover. Um, we really encourage everyone, uh, usually everybody has a cell phone nowadays, to have some type of weather app that you can, uh, monitor the weather. And usually it'll send you notifications, um, with a caveat that, uh, you've got to understand that sometimes they'll do a, uh, thunderstorm warning for Dallas County. The only problem is Dallas County goes way to the north and that storm may be going across the north side of, uh, of Dallas County. And a lot of people wonder, well, why are our sirens not going off? Because there's a thunderstorm warning. Well, we may have blue skies, uh, above, so why would I want to set off a siren, you know, with, with blue skies a- above me? So, um, it's important that everybody, um, knows what to do in case of a, a storm coming through. Uh, especially if you have an app with notifications that'll let you know. Now, they'll irritate you. I'll tell you, they will irritate you in the middle of the night because, uh, if you're trying to get some sleep, you better turn your ringer down because you'll hear a notification every five minutes. It's, it's irritating, but, uh, some in my position, I, I've got to monitor it so I won't listen to it all night long just to make sure we, uh, make the decisions whether to send them, set them sirens off. Uh, also, uh, there's a procedure we go through. Uh, when I get ready to set those sirens off, I'll notify the city manager that I'm, that I'm going to do it. Generally I'll, uh, watch, you know, I'll try to catch it ten minutes before it gets to the western, uh, border of the town, so that gives people an opportunity to get cover and get out of the, the approaching storm. Once I contact the city manager, that city manager usually contacts, uh, the council. Let them know that, uh, we're going to set the sirens off and this is the reason why we're going to set the sirens off. Then we'll go in there and we'll, uh, do a Everbridge message out to everyone who has signed up for Everbridge so they can get a notification that, um, you know, there's, there's some type of storm coming and, and what it is. We try to make it as brief as we can, uh, so people can turn to their favorite TV channel and, uh, see what the, what the D, what the details are. So there is a process and I know y'all have been a part of that process, so, uh, it works well. Everybody gets informed and, uh, you know, it's a good notification for the community.
Uh, Mr. Contreras, just a moment, sir?
Yes, sir.
On this screen, um, so the, um, different colored lines that radiate out from these cell towers or from these sirens, um, does that just kind of represent how far out they reach beyond? Because some of them obviously are beyond our city limits.
Yeah, yes, sir. Uh, what it is, is those, inside those purple lines is you get a certain amount of DB from them sirens. As you go out, the yellow has, you know, it has a reduced DB. And then as you go out, a little bit more or less DB. And then you get out there into the red, of course, it's out into the city limits, uh, at that point. But it's a reduced DB as it travels out away from those sirens.
The people that live out in that area, they can kind of tell when it's coming out of Duncanville versus something that might be in their neck of the woods in Cedar Hill, say, for instance. Because it looks like we've reached pretty far out. Um, I really ask that because then the question really is, how much do we coordinate with the surrounding areas, uh, be it Dallas, Cedar Hill, DeSoto? Uh, or, uh, yeah. Um, because it seems like there's, they'd be getting the same information you're getting. And so it also seems like there's a strong possibility they'd be setting their alarms off in, in the, at the same time as we are. Is that, is that happening? Do you know?
I do, I do. Uh, when it, type of storms are coming in, Cedar Hill will open up their EOC. I open up our EOC until a le- what they call level three monitoring. And just, and DeSoto's the same way. And we're on, uh, radio contact or phone contact. And if one of us makes the decision, generally we'll look, make sure we don't have blue skies above us. All three of the cities will generally set it off at the same time. Uh, Dallas will sit theirs off. And a lot of our citizens are hearing Dallas's, uh, sirens being set off because you, they may have a storm coming through downtown. And the way I understand it, all their sirens sound at one time throughout the whole city. So that's what we're probably hearing here in, uh, our towns is over to the west and to the north. We may be hearing, uh, Dallas sirens. So, yeah, they do overlap.
Right, thank you.
One other system that we do have in the city, and I think there's some confusion about this system, uh, because our system is set off manually. Uh, somebody literally has to push the buttons to make these sirens go off. They, they won't go off accidentally unless that's, some of y'all may have remembered years ago they got hacked. Uh, I think we've taken care of that little problem. So, uh, generally there's very few people who set those sirens off. This system here is automatic. It, uh, is a, um, it's in six of our parks. The Armstrong, Alexander, Harrington, Lakeside and Lions Park, along with Redbird. And these, what these things are, are li- lightning prediction, uh, system. So they're in the parks and what they do is they read, they read, uh, your static charges in the air. And they can do that up to fifteen miles away. And, uh, if they read that there's enough and they detect a lightning strike within a two mile radius of Duncanville, then these will go off automatically. And they'll sound a siren for fifteen seconds. And there's a strobe light, uh, affiliated with that too. Once they do not receive the charge anymore and they haven't detected any, uh, lightning in the area, then you'll hear three five-second horn blast indicating that, um, you know, it's clear to go back out on the ball field or something and play, uh, your baseball, softball, whatever you're playing. So, uh, it's a very good system, uh, it's reliable. And I think that people mix these sirens up with our community alert sirens and these lightning detection. There, but they're two separate things. One's automatic, one's manual. Want to look at our performance indicators, some of our calls. One I'd like to draw attention to is our EMS, uh, calls for service. Uh, during this quarter, we had one thousand two hundred and sixty-five, uh, calls for service. So our EMS system runs probably about sixty-nine to seventy-four percent of our total calls. So, um, that's been increasing here over the last couple of years. We're kind of seeing it level off a little bit, but, uh, we still have quite a bit of EMS calls i- in the city. And that's the end of my report. You have any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Mr. Coons?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you for the, the updates. And I wanted to ask you about staffing. So we have three, three vacancies, right?
Yes, sir.
And how many, so on, on a, so they work twenty-four hour shifts, right? So on any given shift, how many, uh, medics do we have and how many firefighters do we have on any given shift?
Our minimum staffing is, uh, five at each station with a, what we call our incident commander or battalion chief. So generally we want to keep at least two, uh, paramedics to be able to ride those ambulances. And we like to keep a paramedic on that fire apparatus. Reason for that is the, um, ambulances can go on medical calls. If they're out in their district, what they'll do is they'll, uh, dispatch a fire apparatus with another paramedic. And we call them paramedic engines. So they can go in there and they can initiate, um, or start care until we can get another ambulance from, uh, either another city or one of our districts, uh, to come in there and transport. Generally, we have four paramedics assigned per shift, per station. If they're not, you know, on vacation or sick or on a holiday.
Yep. So just given, given the demands on the, the department, i- if we were to, let's say we were to fill those three vacancies, would that be enough? I guess is what I'm, what I'm trying to ask, uh, as far as meeting the demands on the, on the department.
No.
Okay.
Uh, those three vacancies will get me just up the level. Uh, because I'm still going to have to send those three vacancies to paramedic school. So while they're going to paramedic school, I get nothing out of them while they're going to school. So I have to backfill with other paramedics, uh, to ride it until they get out of school and come back in and they can count as staffing. But we're always short. Uh, we have vacancies all the time. And we really need to increase our staffing, uh, probably by about six to make sure that we have effective staffing to, you know, man the ambulances while other people are going to paramedic school or any other kind of training.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Contreras?
Uh, we've never had a deputy fire marshal. Uh, we just had that position approved in October. And we, uh, according to civil service rules, you got to give ninety days before you can test. Well, that was end of December, beginning of January, then we had a test, but nobody passed the test. So we had to wait to extend the period of time to get another test schedule. So we just had someone, uh, pass that exam and, uh, we're going to promote him on the twenty-fourth of April.
The amount of work that the fire marshal has to carry on his shoulders. Um, this is huge that we got, got him this kind of qualified health. So thank you.
Well, I thank the council because it's going to be a very important position. It allows my, uh, fire marshal to go out and actually do his job. And, uh, my deputy can go out and do inspections. And then if there's a reason why the fire marshal is out of town, then he can come up there and fill in. So we're not ever out of a, a fire marshal. That's a, a very demanding position and a very position that we really do need.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And again, on behalf of our entire council, we are proud of our firefighters and our EMTs through the entire staff and our gratitude to all of them for what they do and being in the best city in, in Texas and having the best firefighter department with your leadership. We do appreciate that very much.
And I will convey that to my guys and I just want to say, uh, that ditto to my Assistant Chief. Uh, I'll let you guys know that I have the best Assistant Chief in Greg Che- Chase out of the three or four cities. Uh, now that is my opinion, but I've got some facts that I use to prove that. So y'all can be proud that y'all have that Assistant Chief, uh, that we do have. I don't want to embarrass him or anything, but.
He's already done that by himself.
Oh, he's?
Yeah.
I'm very, very proud of him because he, he does an excellent job. He's very, very, uh, sociable in, in the community and, uh, he networks very well with our other, um, cities. So, uh, I, I'm proud to have him.
And we are as well. Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you for all that you do. All right, folks, uh, we, as I said earlier, we are creating item number seven. Item number seven is the executive session. I'll read that. City Council sought convening to close executive session to seek legal advice from the city attorney pursuant to section five fifty-one point zero seventy-one of the Texas Government Code concerning the termination of former city manager potential or threatened litigation, if any. And action is necessary as a result of the executive session. There is no action to be taken as a result of executive session. That completes our business for tonight. With that, we stand adjourned at eight thirty-two. Thank you.